Okay, it is six oh two on August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. I'm officially calling this meeting to order at twenty-four Main Street. Uh, we're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Clarissa, roll call please.
Alright, uh trustee Alter?
Yep.
Trustee Decker?
Here.
Yes, uh trustee Emery Anderson, trustee Sauer?
Yep.
And trustee Sherrigan? Um. Uh deputy mayor Meyer?
Here.
And mayor Allen.
I am present.
There's Dan.
You can change your event to fresh.
No, Dan is arriving.
Did somebody close the door?
Not yet. We're not exactly in session.
Are you here?
Alright.
Yeah, are you here?
Hi Dan, we're already in, we just started, so have a seat wherever you like.
Just stay here.
Okay.
Stay here.
Here.
Okay, um, so it is, uh, as noticed, uh, just after six, I'm gonna officially open the hearing pertaining to the property located at eighteen John Street, um, and this is pertaining to, uh, its status as an unsafe structure as per our local law from two thousand and eight regarding unsafe structures. So at this point, should I turn it over to Elena or Mark to go through the, um, sort of the record and what, what has happened and transpired on the building? Who would like to take that?
It's basically just a hearing, this is a hearing to give the owner an opportunity to come and appeal, uh, you know, what, uh, we have decided it is an unsafe building, it's gonna be torn down. So, yeah, opportunity to come to hearing to, to argue that point if he chooses to do so.
If he doesn't?
If he doesn't?
How long will it be until that building comes down?
Well, we, we will decide at the end of the meeting, um, after the public hearing is done, we have the decision to move forward, um, and order its, uh, demolition as a board order as an unsafe structure or not. So once we go through the record, uh, with Mark and Elena and give the, uh, owner of the building a chance to speak, uh, then we'll make that decision.
How long do we have to hold the public meeting open?
Half hour, is that right?
There, there's no requirements?
No set requirement, but I would say hold it open until six thirty, if we.
Show up.
So, so do you wanna, do you want me to hold off on entering exhibits, or do you wanna do that now?
Uh, do you guys wanna proceed through with the exhibits of the record?
Yes, I think so.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
So, first I have village exhibit one, which is a July eleventh, twenty twenty-three, um, report slash letter from our code enforcement officer and building safety inspector, Art Setum, so I would enter that into evidence.
Received, thank you.
And I will also move to enter village exhibit two, which is an engineering report dated May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, signed by William K. Trowell into evidence.
Good old Mr. Cottrell, alright. Also received is exhibit number two, um, you guys can pass this around and just make sure it ends up back
Back here.
by Dan and then Clarissa lined up with all of these, or Mark, however you guys wanna pursue the record.
Clarissa, you have a copy, don't worry.
Yeah, those are your copies.
Yeah, these are copies for the hearing, so Clarissa can have them as part of the record.
Okay.
Um, next I would move village exhibit three, which is also an engineering report that is dated July fifth of twenty eighteen,
Mm-hmm.
into evidence.
And now this one, for those of you who have not been on the board this whole time, was the very first report done in July of twenty eighteen, uh, where the same engineer, uh, Bill Cottrell, um, concluded that it either needed, it was in imminent danger of collapse and recommended that immediate steps be taken to either restore the building or demolish it, which is the conclusion of this one.
These are good favorite tales.
Yeah. Okay, so evidence, uh, exhibit three is received.
And last I would move village exhibit four, which is a series of pictures that were taken. Mark, do you wanna just explain?
So, yeah, the pictures are over the last couple of years, um, but, uh, most of them are more recent, so we, we, uh, John Hudson got out his little throne one day and we took some pictures of the roof, which were helpful, um, and then the other pictures are pictures of the foundation, there is one picture that looks there is true. Really the foundation, there's a cracked pipe, uh, sewer pipe, which is an indication to me that something's moved, but it's completely broken. So, uh, there's something in the building that's moved, which would make sense considering the number of spaces, uh, you know, there's foundation pictures, there's where bricks and stuff have collapsed. This picture of electrical panel, it's not a picture of this electrical panel, but you can see daylight. What it is, electrical panels hanging on a piece of plywood, but if you look below and in the cracks, you can see daylight out the foundation.
Ooh.
So, that's, and that's some of all of the things that collapsed. Then, just a couple more pictures where things have collapsed on the foundation. They're hard, they're hard to make out, but what I was trying to get a picture of is like daylight. You know, I'm in the basement, I'm taking pictures of daylight through the foundation, so, in a couple different areas.
I can imagine you were going in in the basement.
So Mark, just for record purposes, these are all photographs that you took of your observations of eighteen Johnson's.
Yes.
I would move village exhibit four technically.
Uh, received and accepted. And again, you guys can take, pass it around, take a look.
That is the extent of our evidentiary proof with respect to the unsafe nature of that building. So I would encourage everybody to look at that, and then if we can keep the hearing open for another twenty minutes to see if the owner
Sure.
arrives, and then we can see if there's any movements going on at that time.
Okay, and then, um, Mark, for purposes of the record, can you just walk through what was done to serve the owner?
Uh, so, we, uh, he had a P.O. box with eleven, which we historically have always used, uh, to send him stuff. And when we mailed, so we mailed something out, uh, with the, uh, uh, signature term, the
Certified, certified.
Registered, right, certified.
Yeah, um, so the P.O. box, that came right directly back the same day, uh, because the P.O. box is no longer in service.
Okay.
So then, uh, then, we tried to do it the next day, it ended up being a couple more days, maybe even three days.
Three days.
Because the post office window was closed.
Yeah.
Yes.
For lack of help.
Yes.
So when we finally were able to get it in there, we did do a, we did another certi- certified to the, uh, I think it's fifty-seven Church Street?
Fifty-one Church Street.
Fifty-one Church Street, where he actually lives. We all, we all think he lives there, we see him coming out and out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we also did just a first class, so we did a certified and we did a first class. As of today, we have not received back the certified card that usually comes back, which is not uncommon sometimes because people don't sign them, they don't, they refuse to sign them. Which is why you also send the first class.
And we were super kind to send her.
If the first class doesn't come back, it's assumed that you received.
And did you?
And I also posted it on the building, and I took pictures. Uh, but, basically I took the, uh, the notice, I put it in a, uh, I put it in an envelope that says "Weather Protected",
Mm-hmm.
and attached it to the building and took, uh, three pictures of that.
Okay, I have, um, digital copies of the pictures. Uh, if anyone needs to see anything up on the screen or those in case anyone replies, or if the owner wants to reference anything.
Can we have those pictures with respect to the service, not just the exhibit five?
Uh, uh, which, oh, the service, yes. Uh, Mark, did you send those pictures to me?
I asked Mark.
Which pictures?
The, of serving the notice.
The ones that I took where I put it on the building?
Yes.
I did that.
Okay, if you could, uh, either email or text them and I'll get them.
Gonna bronze it.
And then, and then, once those are received by me, why don't we do email, that's probably the easiest way. And then, uh, once I've received them, I'll put them in the folder and they will be received as exhibit five. Pictures of serving the notice. Well, I can't hear you over the pretzel bag, the pretzel bag.
How long has it been since you paid taxes on stuff at least?
I don't know.
I thought there was something that generated that.
There, there probably is a way to look that up, cause those tend to be public documents.
I think Kevin.
Kevin always looks that up.
He said something, he did like three years, something like.
He's always looking.
Yeah.
Kevin always knows that.
Kevin knows.
Kevin.
He knows, but you can't, he's the, he's a phantom man, he's out there.
Let me see if I can, uh, find it.
Would you say he's a phantom?
He's a starter.
He's all over the place.
Alright, so while Mark is getting me exhibit five, um, and again, this meeting is recorded, so this is part of the evidence and the record. Uh, at this point, six twelve, um, Kenny has not reported anyone at his location, we do not have, um, the owner, uh, Jonathan Daniel here. So we will leave, um, this open, if you guys do have any follow-up questions on any of the, um, exhibits, uh, for Mark or Elena, that would be fine and appropriate to, uh, to ask about. I'm actually looking right now, I think I may have found it. Let's see here.
I thought it was just a vertical crack, I didn't realize it was a vertical crack. But I don't, it's completely severed.
Yeah.
Wow.
That's an indication.
Cause cast iron doesn't bend too well.
Well, I have the bill, but I don't know if it doesn't show record of his pay or not. Hmm. Oh, here it is.
I found, I was just curious.
I like this.
You can't eat it, you just complained about it.
Two eighty, two eighty Doug.
Okay, so.
Why don't you?
Um, give me just one minute here.
Huh?
Trump says he raised two fifty, and six four three.
One six three, and way more. But really, yeah, I, did you?
There was a whole betting thing on his wins.
Okay, up on the screen, um, these are the pictures from Mark of him noticing, uh, the actual location on premises.
What's the date on that?
Uh, on the, on the document?
Uh, yeah, when it was put up, I guess.
Uh, it's, it's on page two, um, let me see, Mark emailed this to me on, or Mark emailed this to himself rather.
No, I just did a, it should, I think the
Oh, okay, I see.
picture code should have the
Oh, yeah, yeah, um, I'll look at the metadata in just a moment. Um, image number two, there it is posted in the window spa, or on the window of the
Right, so I just progressed back, just so you can see, it's definitely on that. It was last, we only did the first one to P.O. box, it was that last one.
You got, um, if you show me your, did you take that on your phone, Mark?
Yeah.
Let me take a look at your phone, because the computer details, all the metadata was specific to when you emailed it and photo, and sent it via the photo, so the metadata on the, the actual picture on the phone will be proper.
No, I probably, I deleted it on my phone.
Oh, did you send it to your, but you sent it to your email?
Yep.
Alright. Trying to, I know I have a record of you telling me that you served it, so.
Yeah, it's in an email.
Yeah, he sent it.
Yep, that's what I was thinking.
Send it to all of us.
Right, yeah.
Notice, no.
Get it?
Eight twenty-two, there's your, uh, answer. It was posted on, uh, eight twenty-two. And it was sent to the papers right after the last meeting, right, Clarissa?
Over the weekend.
Yep, so, yeah, okay, um. Oh, yeah, it's in the name, I'm sorry. Jeepers. Chrome looked at metadata, literally the file name right there.
I thought somebody photoshopped Jonathan Daniels, he was popping his head off.
Steven got, uh, yeah, Steven got the time of the photos and everything, so, yep. Alright.
Where's Waldo?
Okay, so, um, should we, we, no, we'll leave the hearing open for a little bit longer, um, is it appropriate to go on to our other business? Okay, so with permission from you guys, we'll go on to the other items of business, if that's alright?
Do it.
Okay, so first off, um, we did reach out to Andy Gerofrus, our former village attorney, to see if he'd be interested in taking on code enforcement related matters, as, uh, Elena has realized the sheer volume of business we get to, uh, lovingly handle at the Village of Huzick Falls, a little tiny village. Um, everyone was, was very happy with this agreement, so, um,
Understatement.
I am looking for, um, a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the retainer agreement with Gerofrus Tingley P.C. to provide legal services to the Village of Huzick Falls relating to code enforcement matters, including, um, and I, there was a misprint on my agenda. It's supposed to be including court appearances, not including code enforcements.
Can I, can I just, before we get to that, is there a discussion in period?
Yeah, we make the motion, second it, and then we discuss it, so, looking for a motion.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you, Bobby Decker?
Second.
Thank you, Doug, alright, Dan, you, uh, wanna discuss something?
Is there a limit on how many hours a month? I, I just don't wanna get a surprise bill here for a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
Two things that I want, the other thing is I wanna make sure that we're using attorneys for attorney work. And, and
I'm sorry, I couldn't, they were using what?
Attorneys for the court work and all that.
Yep.
Whatever, I, I just, the other thing is I don't wanna get stuck, if we have a lot of cases and get stuck with a big bill, is there some way to know how, generally how many hours we're looking at a month?
Well, I mean, we can, these don't come up that often, and they're not a regular monthly occurrence.
So this is not, I thought there was court like three or four times a month.
There are, there are multiple courts, but
No, I thought, I thought there was a lot of court cases.
No, historically, when, when Andy was doing this with the village, we actually worked with the courts to set up one court night, and it met as often as a month, as we had a lot of cases, but once those cleared out, it was only like once every couple months, as needed.
Oh, I thought there was a lot of court activity.
Initially there was, but once we got kind of the backlog pushed through, then it was just kind of an as needed. Now, right now, we have a couple high priority, as needed cases.
There's still, there's still a few more cases, but yeah, I, so, and, you know, you gotta remember, every time you get into one of these cases, there is some time involved.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I end up spending a lot of time, you know, so we have, uh, you know, like six, Third Street, Thirty-third Street. I mean, those are a couple that are next, coming up next, and
Yep.
they do involve some time, that part of it involves some court stuff, you know, but
Yeah, and, and
Yeah, once you've kind of worked through these, then it's more sporadic.
Okay, for some reason I thought this was like a
I mean, these are the three like major cases, we're talking, well, four.
I thought there was, there was a lot of court.
Fifty-nine, fifty-nine classic and the other two.
It's only as needed, um, and typically what they have done is they've, if there are multiple court appearances, they schedule it for the same night. And that's, that's typically how it works.
Alright.
Um, there's, you know, speaking about financially how this has happened in the past, the cost of the attorney versus, you know, whatever fees or fines come in court, it's not equal, we're gonna be paying more for the attorney, that's without question, but what it, in my mind, was able to do and will continue to do is it gave Mark the teeth to continue pursuing all the way to the end when we have situations like this where they're out of compliance for so long.
Right, and we get to see the end result.
My, my other question is, i- if Andy's gonna be handling these court cases, should he take a look at, uh, some of these laws, I think are kind of older, right, that, that are referenced? Um, should he take a look at those and see if there's a way we can, you know, either increase enforcement or streamline the process, or what have you, or is that?
He's certainly free to give recommendations on, on things he can see changed.
That's something we can sort of discuss after we go along.
Well, how current are, are our
You guys have, you guys just passed the new laws.
Right, I was gonna say.
And we, we updated the unsafe structure one, so that's also a personal reason, so.
Just get them and make them, start using them.
If, if, if anything needed to be updated, it may be sort of like fee structure for penalties, but that's something we could just Yeah, since also what our normal attorney would do, yeah.
And as far as the, this, I guess this is an Elena question, if we have a fee that says a hundred dollars a day compounded or whatever, is that ultimately the judge's discretion, or is that a deal where, your honor, it's been forty days, that's four thousand dollars according to village law, but nah, let the guy for two hundred.
No, that's a way of course discretion.
It is.
Either like, it, either, you either complete bargain and have a set amount, or it's at court discretion. But, if you do it based on like, okay, let's say it compounds and they've been out of compliance for two years, so you have like two years worth of compound fees or interest or whatever on that fee.
Mm-hmm.
Nobody in their right mind's gonna say like, oh yeah, I'll give it to you, and the judges are going to, so
Right.
You need to make out some sort of deal, or the court's gonna do it.
Right, cause it's not gonna get, it's not gonna get paid anyway, right? I mean, if it's that high, you're not gonna get, it's not gonna be paid anyway.
And we can't talk to the judges, that's it.
I'm, I'm just
At one point, the judge interpreted ours, uh, through the violation, um, you had to present a new violation each day, which I didn't necessarily agree with, but that was his interpretation. So that's something we can look at, if it comes, that should be sort of discussed.
Yeah.
And I think in the new laws that was addressed that it, it doesn't need to be a rewritten violation every day, or it's a, um, a continuing.
Yeah, make that argument.
Yes.
So that's what, that's what the judge
At one time, that was his interpretation, yeah, with Andy here.
That's so
The problem with, with non-attorney judges.
No, it's up to the judge.
They have a lot of discretion.
So do you have to go back every day?
You had almost, you had to file like refiled.
I think once they go through that, they kind of may readjust their interpretation in the future, is what it is.
Well, it's difficult to do that every day.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I would feel the responsible thing to do is at least put a budget number in as a placeholder or benchmark, so we know, I don't know if we're going ten thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand.
Sure.
Do we already have something like that, Mark? Not, I'm sorry, Doug, in the code enforcement, in, in your, there's gotta be something in the budget for code enforcement.
I think when we brought on Elena as a retainer, all the, the, we kind of assumed at that point that it would fall under that, so I don't think we have any additional. I'm gonna go to the budget and check, uh, there's certainly nothing stopping us in a future meeting of making a budget modification to adjust that.
And we just monitor it, so
Yeah.
You know.
Put a, put a line on them in there.
Yeah. Put a line on it. Something reasonable that
It should come under code enforcement, now that he, he's specifically, he was never specifically for code enforcement, it was just another part of the bill.
Right.
Now, he'll be specifically for code enforcement, it should come under code enforcement budget.
Yeah, so, I mean, we could, um, set a maximum of, you know, five thousand dollars for, for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and see how that goes.
How much does he charge in a
It's a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour, and if paralegal is involved, it's a hundred dollars an hour, and he will do
Hundred plus expenses.
very good incremental, honest assess, uh, adjustments, so if the paralegal only does fifteen minutes of work, we're only gonna charge a quarter.
My only concern is it's only Andy.
Every chat, chick chat.
Well, if
Every email, every
Well, no, he, he doesn't, in the past, he didn't do things that way.
But he was not a retainer
Yeah. No, he, he used to have hourly invoices, and we, we do have those records, so he, he was very good about that, now
So you wanted to say five thousand for the heck of it, by the end of the year?
I mean, that would give us, um, probably at minimum twenty work hours plus, um, another probably seven or eight paralegal work hours. And if that's, you know, if, if we see that that's going over budget, we can
I'll ask Denise to fill me the bills too, so I, you know, I should, I mean, really, I should sign off on the bills anyway, it's specific to code enforcement, you know, to make sure, so, and so it also gives me an idea.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and we do have a, a regular occurrence of putting, um, uh, attorney fees in the binder, so that if, if, if we need to see them or
Even if we go over, I think that, that's idea is good, if we have a number, at least we can, we can know if we're getting close to it.
Yeah, and we can always transfer more if we have to, we can improve more if we have to.
And, and as we're budgeting for next fiscal year, this will help, so.
And that's gonna be more, I think, cause we
And, and don't get me wrong, cause I am not opposed to spending any money, I would, I think we need, I mean, you know, I'm maximum, I don't wanna say maximum enforcement, but, you know.
We need to keep things moving.
Keep things moving, yeah, this thing and with the classic string, right?
We're leaving the car there, Doug, forever.
There's like, the, the three that Mark referenced, the, the classic string and the, the, um, six, six-third and thirty-third, those are definitely major violations and, those, I mean
Get those done first, and then
You know, go from there, right.
How we, um
Can't be having ten
What do we formally need to do to amend the motion?
They bogged me down too.
Yeah.
No, I know they did.
Three going at once.
Especially when you find out someone's been paying on the wrong address.
Oh, then Kevin's out collecting forty-two cars of the, not, not registered.
Well, and there are few places that
He's brutal, man, he doesn't understand anything.
Okay.
Well, Dan, I, I, Mark, I said this to Mark earlier, just say here, Daniel's car has to get out of their ASAP because that
Okay, okay.
grand committee
Okay.
They asked about this building and the car, and they're like, steal that.
Yeah, the car, it's not, you know, it's not just the car that's on there, it's all that steel.
Yep.
And the tracks.
Yeah, alright, so just for the sake of this motion, I'm looking, uh, do I need permission, or do I just say we're gonna amend it based on the discussion?
There's usually a motion to amend, and then a second on the motion, and then you vote on it as amended.
Alright, I'm looking for a motion to amend the current motion to add, uh, with, uh, a maximum of five thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Can we add to that, that if it goes over that, that the board will be notified?
Uh, well
We'd have to, so the motion's only approving it up to that amount, so if it goes over, the board, the board actually has to vote on it.
Yeah, so we don't, yeah, so I need, uh, so on the, um, so I need someone to offer the amended motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
And then second, alright, further discussion on amending the motion, all in favor of accepting the amended motion?
Aye.
I oppose or abstentions, carry, so now we have the full motion set, uh, any further discussion on it? All in favor of the full motion?
Aye.
I oppose or abstentions, do we need to do a roll call, I mean, it's unanimous, I guess it doesn't matter. Do you, the record, let the record reflect, it's unanimous, okay. It is approved, I will, uh, assign it and, uh, I'll, I'll give a copy to you, Clarissa, and we can forward it to Andy tomorrow. Uh, and that is brilliant.
I get worried about
Alright, um, the other item is an introduction of local law number five. Now, this is a local law creating a loading and unloading zone in the village of Huzick Falls. Um, in its, um, discussions related to today, I did reach out to the Huzick provision owner and talked through the, sort of the original, uh, version of this, and what we changed it to, and the original version had two zones, one in the front and one on the side. But the problem is the majority of the front of the building is right on the intersection there.
You see those trucks coming?
Uh, yeah, and I talked to, uh, Kenny Holbrook, and he was also concerned about putting it there, so I talked to, um, the owner, Mary Ann Zookbauer, and she understood, and she was good with that. So when we crafted the local law here, and if you note section two, um, a loading/unloading zone is hereby created to allow for a thirty-minute loading and unloading zone on the northern side of Lower John Street, beginning at the crosswalk at the easternmost end of Lower John Street, and running west seventy-five feet down Lower John Street. And then we defined Lower John Street, because if you look at Google Maps, there's two John Streets. Lower John Street is defined as the stretch of John Street that branches off the west side of Route twenty-two and Church Street, and extends west to First Street and Loudoun Street. So that defines Lower John and all that stuff.
Looks good to me.
Beautiful, so
Is that actually formally called Lower John Street?
Yes.
I thought that was just
It's not on Google Maps, but I have always heard it here referred to as
It's always been, my entire life has been
Seven, and then there's Lower Classic Street too.
That's technically, it's, I think if you look at a map, it's just Classic.
Yes, so I don't Yeah, I don't know why, but I, just for the sake of this, for clarity, so, I'm looking for someone to formally introduce the law.
I'll, I'll second.
Alright, Dan and Bobby Decker, and now we just need to set a motion, uh, I'm looking for a motion to set a public hearing on the local law, and my suggestion would be our next regular meeting in two weeks, which would be September thirty, thirteenth, rather, September thirteenth. Um, and we could do it first, the meeting at six P.M. if that works for everybody. So I'm looking for a motion to set the public hearing on this, uh, proposal of law number five for September thirteenth at six P.M., and we'll do it at the highway garage. Thank you, Bobby Decker, need a second?
Second.
Alright, I don't need to mo, um, oh yeah, all in favor of that motion?
Aye. Aye.
I oppose or abstentions?
That's
Alright, carries.
So, well, that's the signs will say no parking.
Or loading zone, it'll be like, like a loading zone.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk to Kenny about what kind of signs we need to put there for that. It may just be a matter of handing it to the police officers and saying, this is the local law pertaining to this stretch, so if you see someone there, it's a thirty-minute loading/unloading zone, that's okay, anything longer, you should
You need to use the signs.
We gotta
We don't have to get permission from the state because it's on John's, Lower John, not on
Right, it's not on
Church, on Route twenty-two, so we don't need permission from the state to put the sign up.
Yeah. Okay, um, it is six thirty P.M., our public hearing has been open for about thirty minutes now. Um, Kenny Holbrook has reported that no one has showed up, so he is all set.
Mary and Harold are breaking their leaves, that's why they're not there.
Beautiful.
What about the sticks?
They're shoveling snow, they wanna get a
Um, so, going back to the hearing regarding eighteen John Street, we have gone through the evidence and the five exhibits we have on the record, um, the owner has not appeared uh, on site to discuss or defend the situation. Uh, so at this point, I think it behooves us to close the hearing, and then we can formally decide on a board, uh, our next steps, that makes sense?
Yep.
Alright, so
Need a motion to close?
Looking for a motion to close the hearing, thank you, Doug, I'll take Doug as a second, further discussion, all in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
I oppose or abstentions, alright, it carries, so, at this point, um, if the board so chooses, I would, uh, entertain a motion to confirm the board's order, um, that eighteen John Street is an unsafe structure and to proceed with demolition.
I will make that.
Bobby Decker?
Second.
Second? Second, Dan, alright, so again, uh, Clarissa, that was a motion to confirm the board's order that eighteen John Street is an unsafe structure. And to proceed with demolition. Further discussion on that?
Um, like I was asking for, how long do you think it'll take for it to go down?
We have to put bids out.
Got to find the kind of trajectory.
We have to review the bids.
Yeah. Very good.
Bring the bids to a formal meeting.
Is there asbestos, Mark?
It's a couple months, I think we're going to end up having to do it as asbestos.
Okay, I just, I wanted to say that.
Yeah, so.
There's no point in even trying to come in and do remediation, it's not safe to have anybody in the building.
Yep.
We just, we'll assume it's, uh, asbestos and.
Okay.
So, it'll go out for bid, the bids will come back and they'll be, you have to hold the bids and officially open them, that's a, a fun little perk thing, I don't think you've had to do that yet.
I haven't.
Uh, we'll, we'll talk about that, that after, in the bid opening.
So if he shows up after this, that's.
Um, and then the board.
Decision's made.
Just another, just another, after it's demolished, what do we do then with that law?
It's still his property.
It's his.
Yeah, so that's going to be whatever it's going to be.
Build the basement in and.
It's going to be what it is, yeah.
Well, Mar- Mary Ann has rights of first refusal to buy the property if he wants to sell it, but.
Oh, was that part of her agreement?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Oh, when she bought the other building?
When we, um, took down this property back, or no, the neighboring property in twenty-eighteen, and I think one or two others, part of it was filling in and making that spot safe with, you know, especially if there's like a foundation.
We can dictate how we, what we want to do that, if you want to seed it, uh, typically, we just gra, we just gravelled it on some of these, but there have been others where we've, uh, you know, said, you know, uh, a couple inches of topsoil and, and seed it.
I, I think I would like the green space out of it.
Yeah, it's so close to the business district. It's one thing if it's out in the woods somewhere.
So you can make that part of the bid specs? Could you actually go for both gravel and seeding and see what the prices come back as?
Well, they, it is with gravel anyway, because we're going to end up going to fill it in.
You're going to have to fill it in and put the topsoil up, I mean, that, it can't be that much topsoil, dude.
Okay. Okay.
No, it's usually just a couple inches and then you got, it's not, I think they quite hate it, but.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, Deb, you had another question.
I agree with that.
Yes, I just wanted to say that when it's time to pull that building down, if you could please coordinate with, um, Mary Ann?
Oh, that has to be, because they're connected.
Because they're connected.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Effective business, so.
Yeah, it won't, it won't be done without her knowledge.
Yeah, that one.
Because she wants to get an engineer to be there, in there, or look at it or something.
Well, that makes sense. And, yeah, we'll have plenty of time, because we have to put the bids, get the bids back, so it's, you know, I don't know if it'll be back in two weeks, it probably would be more for either, uh, if we wanted to move early, like a late September, or more likely an October meeting when we approve it.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a bit, yeah.
Probably October meet.
And then it's just a matter of trying to get it done before, uh, the weather goes bad.
Right, I mean, when you know, if, if you know what day it is, if you tell Mary Ann, tell me, whatever, it's something.
Well, you guys all know, I mean, so, how do you want to do it?
Yeah.
We can have a party, are you kidding?
It's, it's, we, you never get it back for September meetings, so.
No, I think, I think we shoot for the October meeting too.
So we shoot for the October meeting to get the bids back.
So, yeah, you, you can put out, um, and you can, you know, we trust you guys to set this, but.